Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this regular scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, February 8th, and it's 7:02. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Jeffrey Sims.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Lowell.
I am here.
Commissioner Ray Baker.
Here.
Vice Chairman Patricia Korsick.
Present.
Chairman Jeffrey Barnes.
Present. Thank you. At this time, the Pledge of Allegiance. Any volunteers? Commissioner Sims, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Next item is approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda.
One second. A motion from Commissioner Lowell, a second from Commissioner Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Sir, we do have the Digital Boardroom voting this evening.
Oh, all right. I don't think we have to do that, though. On that, we don't need it, though, right? We'll use it on future issues.
Up to you.
Okay, well, we've already voted. We won't revisit that one.
Okay.
Oh, I see, okay.
Should be good.
Close that out. Yeah, are we good? Okay. All right, my apologies. This high-tech stuff is so confusing. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. We have first approval of minutes for the meeting of December 21st, 2017.
I'll move that we approved the minutes.
I'll second.
For December 21st. Oh, we're supposed to...
See, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, hit the mover button.
Got it, okay, got it, sorry.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Baker. And a second from Commissioner Sims. Please vote. All votes have been cast. Motion carries four to zero. It's gonna totally confuse me tonight. Next item, the public comment portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the Commission on any matter, either under the Public Comments section of the agenda or Scheduled Items or Public Hearings must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. Completed form must be submitted to the Secretary, party of the agenda item being called by the chairperson. Do we have any speaker slips?
We do. We have Rafael Brugeras and Kendrick Rivas.
Mr. Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I want to talk about what occurred Tuesday. The name change. And the mayor and the council members voted to change Theodore. If Theodore had a chance to speak tonight, he would be glad that he was being remembered in the last several weeks in how he contribute to the city of Moreno Valley by bringing the well. So there'll be water for the oranges and the fruit and the cattle and the men and women that worked in the fields and lived in the city of Moreno. Because you've got to understand that before it became Moreno Valley, it was called Moreno, Moreno Valley. It would have been called Brown. Mr. Brown. But he decided not to do that and used his last name, translated into a Spanish name, Moreno. That's why today it's called Moreno Valley, to honor him for what he contribute to Moreno Valley, because he bought land. He used the reservoir. A lot of these pioneers that had vision lived in Redlands and saw the valley. And they came here to produce oranges, fruit, cattle. We've got to remember that the American Indians and the Mexicano, the Mexican people were here first. So I believe if there was fruits and anything to do with picking, the Mexican people were here doing that. And they were a color of brown. I want to know who Brown was as a person. I can't find that yet. But I did a lot of history. And Moreno Valley or Moreno Beach was once called Pettit. Then it got changed to Moreno Valley, I mean Moreno Beach, when the rest, when the lake was built. Look at it today, how it's grown when you make name changes. Right now, in this city, we got 1,995 names in this city alone, in the streets, almost 2,000 names. Change is good. We're going to talk about change because that's our thing tonight, and our agenda is change. We're going to talk about a few things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras.
When media doesn't have the timer up, I believe it does appear on your screen.
It was not, but maybe it had finished and fell off, I'm not sure. Mr. Rivas.
Good evening, Chair, and Commissioners, staff, and fellow citizens. I would like to address the President of the United States, then the Council. Mr. President, yes, I did vote for you, and also I voted for Hillary Clinton in the primary. America doesn't need a military parade. Why? We all know, we know that our military is the strongest in the world, and the entire world knows that. The entire world does know that they can piss off the United States government, but the United States government will do something, but not, but if you, but if other governments do piss off the American people, they know the American people will retaliate at the We don't need a military parade. And Commissioners, I would say, if there's any new home developments happening, can there please be like a walkway to like main streets? I've been seeing in satellite images that there isn't like walkways that you have to go, the main streets, you have to go down the street, make a right or left, then go back up the street, which takes a lot of time of walking. Can they please, like in new home developments, be easier to access one of the main streets? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Thanks very much. So we'll close the Public Comments section of the meeting. Next item on the agenda, non-public hearing items. General Plan Annual Report to be submitted to the State Office of Planning and Research.
Before I introduce the Speaker on this one, I do want to introduce one additional gentleman that's here with us this evening, to my right, and that's Albert Armio. Albert is our new interim planning manager, planning official. He was brought on board to backfill my position, and I've stepped up into the Acting Community Development Director position. And so Albert will be here at subsequent meetings. I will be attending some, but not all, and I just wanted to introduce Albert to you. We're happy to have him on board. He just started this week.
Welcome, Mr. Armio.
Thank you.
The item before you, the non-public hearing item, will be presented by Claudia Manrique.
Chair and Commissioners, California Government Code Section 65400 requires an annual progress report on the implementation status of the city's general plan. And this includes progress meeting our regional housing needs assessment, also known as RENA. Reports are due every April 1st to the State Offices of Planning and Research, OPR, and Housing and Community Development, HCD. The 2017 General Plan Annual Report includes major projects and general plans amendments that were approved by the Planning Commission and City Council during the reporting period of January 27th, 2017 through December 2017. It shows that the general plan continues to serve as an effective guide for orderly growth and development in Moreno Valley. And it highlights some in the housing, which is Appendix A of the staff report. In 2017, we constructed and had final occupancy of 341 single-family homes, two accessory dwelling units, and 84 multiple-family units, which in this case were all apartments, which counts towards the city's arena levels of moderate and above-moderate income levels. The city was also able to partner with the Riverside Housing Development Corporation to rehab eight apartment units. These units qualify as very low income and help with our arena. The General Plan Annual Report is exempt from CEQA. Submit to Section 15061 as this report does not have the capability to impact the environment. And therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission forwards the item, recommends forwarding the item on to the City Council for a final consideration and for us to submit to the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Does anyone have any questions of the staff on the panel report? Do you have a speaker? Commissioner Sims.
Mine's not on the staff report, except for the part where they're talking about the city has taken steps, including budgetary approvals outlining the Momentum Movial Strategic Plan to pursue a comprehensive general plan update by August 2019. And I'd be interested in just hearing what that kind of entails and what the timeline is to move that forward. And perhaps if you've already thought through what the, you know, how the input from the public gets involved with that.
Sure. The general plan update that you're referencing in Momentum Movial Strategic Plan had multiple parts to it. The first part was to do an assessment of the general plan, look at all the policies, goals, and objectives to identify which ones have been completed and which ones need to be readdressed and which ones are simply outdated and should be readdressed for that purpose. We also, in the strategic plan, had identified pulling together an ad hoc committee of key members of the city's staff and city departments. We did do that, and we've had multiple meetings of that committee to get together, to develop the scope of work for the general plan update. Another component of Momentum Movial was to set aside money in increments, to basically cobble together enough money to actually do the comprehensive general plan update. That has been accomplished as well. And we also have sought outside grants and have been successful in some regards, and so we have some money that has been brought in to do that. All of that was put together into a staff report, and we're moving forward to the City Council to retain a consultant to do the general plan update so that we can meet the August 2019 target date. On January 9th, the City Council held a study session on the general plan update and directed staff to conduct some visioning first before we actually embark upon the consultant work. And so right now, what we're in the process of doing is evaluating that visioning. We've had some visioning workshop, and we've had the executive team meet and discuss some options of where we can go, and we're working through the City Manager's office to get some additional feedback. That's the progress to date. And we'll update the Planning Commission and City Council as that progresses.
Is Momentum Movial a document that's on the website, or is that something that could be shared with the public at large?
Yes, Momentum Movial on the city's website has a, right on the front page of our website is a QuickLinks button. The public can click on the QuickLinks, and Momentum Movial is one of the shortcuts. And that will give the comprehensive summary of all the initiatives, objectives, and the various initiatives for each of those objectives. And then it also has a attachment that is the SCAG information regarding Moreno Valley. So it's all online available for the public.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions? Well, having no questions and seeing no speakers, probably ought to vote.
We do have speakers, sir.
What's that?
We do have speakers.
Oh, we do?
We have two. Rafael Brugeras and Kendrick Rivas.
Okay, then, open the public hearing for... Rick.
I'm sorry.
Is it appropriate to open the public hearing and get speaker input on this?
It's not actually a public hearing. It wasn't public, but you can take public comments on it, absolutely.
Yeah, excuse me. All right. Well, then we will do that. We'll accept some public comments. Mr. Brugeras.
Good evening again, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and guests. I was looking at the agenda and the item myself, and I was on page two. And I look at the years. They're too long by the time we have another meeting. You know, we look at the one in September 1988, the last time it was done in 2006, you know, then we got another one that was done in 2014. You know, I think that we should need to cut down instead of waiting those 10 years, because they look like 10 years apart. You know, or the, or the, or the general plan, I know it's 18 from the last time I see here, from 1988 to 2006. That's the last time that was talked about or done anything with, okay? That's 18 years, okay? So what I'm saying is that, because we are now living in a fast-paced country, things are changing every day, every hour. We need to cut down of waiting to make great changes for our city and region. We should cut it down to five years instead of 10 years or 18 years. You know, because we're having things that are finally coming back to our country, you know, and we have land that we can designate to those particular projects. You know, because there are companies that want to move all the entire industry, all the entire men and women, all the entire equipment into one building, because it costs money to have four or five of them, like Sketches did at one time. That's why Sketches is there today, because they have five buildings. And they were offered a proposal to have one great building, and we have that one great building on Theodore. It's a world-class building. That's what I'm saying. If we can change of us waiting for so long to do things, maybe things will come faster to the city and things would have approved a little quicker. I'm just saying that by me just reading this, we have waited a long time to do things, and we need to change that thought, you know, because again, we are living in a fast-paced country, and whoever makes the first bid or the first acceptance is that, is that's where the project goes. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to stay ahead of the competition. And I wish everybody the same luck as much, I want Moreno Valley to have the same, but we want to stay ahead of the competition so we can be the ones to have these wonderful companies and whatever else we bring to our city, that's what we want. We don't want to wait 18, 10 years. We need to change that thought.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Rivas.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff. I like that how the general plan says we are working with RTA, and we appreciate that. And I also would like to say that if the, after city goes, it will become more populated. I would say if there's streets that are not supposed to be three or six-lane highway, I would recommend that there should be a six-lane highway. So in the future, one of the, maybe the middle lane will convert into a bus rapid lane, and then it will convert into a light well or magnet system. And like, as general plan, I would like if the city could attract more white-collar jobs instead of blue-collar jobs. I think the city really needs to balance the white-collar jobs distribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas. Rick, could you give us a brief summary of the rules and regulations that drive the general plan update?
Sure. A general plan is basically the city's mission statement. It's the guiding document in terms of policies and goals. Every city, when it's incorporated, is expected to have, in the state of California in particular, is expected to have a general plan. The general plan has seven mandatory elements. Now, there's actually a new mandatory element that's been introduced for any comprehensive update to the general plan. That would be the environmental justice element after 2018. The seven mandatory elements of our general plan do not have to be updated on any particular frequency, except for the housing element. The housing element, based on state law, is expected to be updated every four or eight years, depending on if you've qualified for an eight-year cycle. In 2014, this city updated its housing element and qualified through HCD, Housing and Community Development, to have an eight-year cycle. So our general plan does not have to be updated, other than the housing element, until the next update of that will be 2021. Now, the reason we do a comprehensive update is it is good practice to try and update your general plan on a regular basis, and they have set as a target that a 10-year time span, based on the way the Speaker had identified, there's a lot of things that are changing in the region, there are things that are changing in the state. There may be new state legislation, there may be in different environmental laws, things that may affect your policy or your goals. Also around you specifically, like Moreno Valley, if the city of Riverside, the County of Riverside, the city of Paris, Caltrans, or some other agency made some significant changes to any of their land planning or transportation planning, we may want to reflect that in our general plan. So those are other reasons, while the world around you is changing, that you may want to take a pause and look at your circulation element, your land use element, the noise element in particular here is something that we would look at because we're next to March Air Base. So when March Air Base adopted a new airport land use compatibility plan, we're expected to make sure that our general plan is consistent with that. And so those are some examples of the things we would look at in a comprehensive update to the general plan. Our recommendation to do a comprehensive update in the strategic plan was because we were hitting that 10-year cycle. And so in 2016, we were at 10 years, now we're at 11, 12 years and climbing, so we're in that range.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
I guess, from a comment standpoint, is I tend to agree, you know, there should be, it should be done more than once every, you know, ten, or, you know, once every, before 18, 20 years goes by or something like that, to reflect changes. But that is why there is a general plan amendment process that can accommodate the change. And just from a, just from an effort level, I would not want the public to think that that, to minimize the effort it takes to do a general plan update, because there's disparate views throughout the community to get the visioning and the document actually adopted by the City Council and so forth. So it's a massive, I would believe, a massive undertaking, and that's why you see the length of duration between efforts to do that. But I do think it's, with all the changes that Moreno Valley has done with the logistics projects and, you know, the, that's other things that have come to our commission with the area to the north of the freeway out, you know, between Moreno Beach and Redlands Boulevard and that whole area out there. There are things that are on the table that should be codified in the general plan that sets precedent and vision for how we act and make approvals for things. So I would be highly supportive of the vision and effort to get a good scope of work outlined and in that scope of work to have appropriate amount of public input into the process so that there's a document everybody feels good about.
Rick?
If I can just elaborate, those are excellent points that were made by Commissioner Sims. I want to make one distinction between a general plan update and a general plan amendment. The reason we give you an annual report tonight, and it has to be filed with the state by April 1st, is because the state wants us to be monitoring and reporting on what takes place every year on your general plan, so that the agency is making progress towards its established goals and policies. And if there's been any individual general plan amendments, if you change a land use designation for any of your parcels, if you make a change to a circulation system element, say you want to reduce the width of a roadway in your general plan, or you want to add a new roadway, those constitute amendments to your general plan, but they're not really a comprehensive update. The comprehensive update we're talking about is looking at that whole vision in a comprehensive, from a comprehensive point of view, and deciding, is the city still going in the direction it wants to go? Are the policies set up so that the Planning Commission and the other committees and bodies that are advising to the City Council are all lined up and moving in that direction? It is a very expensive effort, and the bids we did get on the consultant proposals are approximately a million, million and a half dollars is where we were at. And so it isn't, isn't a small undertaking. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Somebody want to make a motion to... I can't bring up the voting.
I'll set it up for you, sir. I need the motioner in second and first.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Sims, second from Commissioner Baker.
That would be good.
We're being challenged by our technical abilities here on the screen.
Or lack of them.
So I would, I make a recommendation that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2018-08, and one certify that the General Plan Annual Report qualifies as an exemption in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act. And two, recommend to the City Council that the January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017 general plan annual report is consistent with requirements of appropriate government code sections with regard to the status of the city general plan progress and its implementation, and is ready to submit to the Office of Planning and Research and to the Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st, 2018.
I'll second that resolution.
Working. So a motion by Commissioner Sims, second by... Second by Commissioner Baker. Please vote. Votes have been cast. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, public hearing items. Case PEN 160048, a general plan amendment. Additional cases, a change of zone, parcel map, master plot plan, additional plot plans, a conditional use permit, and a phasing plan. The applicant is Richard Torn, Galaxy Management Incorporated. Do we have a staff report?
We do. I'd like to introduce our staff planner, staff project manager, Julia Dakota.
Good morning. Wow, good evening, Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you, proposed by Galaxy Management, includes multiple entitlement applications, as you just listed, for a five-building mixed-use medical facility campus located on the southeast corner of Nason and Brodea on approximately 18.5 acres. The project will be developed with a higher-intensity medical uses on the westerly portion of the site and a variety of uses for the... and a variety of uses for that would be medical offices, wellness buildings and an urgent care. And then the lower intensity uses will be assisted living and skilled nursing facilities and will be located on the eastern portion of the site. The project will include a general plan amendment. The general plan, the current general plan is R two. The properties adjacent to the site to the north is residential R three, R five, and then to the south is R two, both, all residential areas. To the west would be community commercial and to the northwest, there is some residential office. All of the area on the west side, the west side of the project, um, I'm sorry, and the west side of Nason are within the medical use overlay. The project is proposing a change of, uh, general plan to residential office. Along with that, general plan amendment would be a change of zone. Change of the current zoning in the, and on this parcel is R A two, which is residential agricultural two, two units to the acre. To the south is also R A two and to the north is R three and R five. On the west side of Nason is community commercial and office commercial. Although the proposed changes would reduce, i- if we approved the general plan amendment and the change of zone, it would reduce the large lots, uh, large lot residential. However, it would offer a different type of housing that would still meet the, the housing needs of the community. Also with the project is a tentative parcel map to subdivide the two parcels into seven parcels. And then we have a master plot plan. The master plot plan establishes the layout for the entire project. There are two medical buildings along the frontage of Nason with the center driveway providing a main entry into the campus. Included in the design is access on Brodea with full street improvements. There's landscape setback areas, block walls are all included in the design in consideration of the existing residential around the site. The overall project includes a landscape entrance along the street frontages, decorative paving, walking paths, trellises, connecting the buildings, impervious paving to assist in water quality while also providing a decorative design to the project. Buildings one and two are two-story. There, one, building one is a medical office building and office, and the medical building two is a wellness center and will also have a, uh, urgent care. Buildings three, four and five are all located to, on the eastern portion of the site. Building three, four and five have assisted living facilities and then there will be skilled nursing facilities in five A and five B. Along with the project is also a phasing plan. The phasing, the project will be developed in three phases. The assisted living in buildings three, four and five C will be developed first. Phase two is the medical buildings one and two along Nason. And phase three is the skilled nursing buildings five A and B. When five A and B are completed, they will connect to building five C. The surrounding area, or the site is surrounded by some vacant land to the north as well as to the south and some existing medical, uh, existing residential lots to the east. To the west is the Riverside County Regional Medical Center. The project is also located within the Nason corridor, which is a guiding vision document for transforming the area into a walkable and livable center for Moreno Valley with a range of housing, jobs and connecting neighborhoods. The access to the site, the main entrance will be off of Nason. Also along Brodea, you'll have three entrances to the site, actually two that are really the main entrance. The third one provides a loop around the project mainly for fire services. Impervious pavement has been incorporated into the site to assist with the water quality. And each use in the site was parked separately and meets the parking requirement. There's, um, six hundred and fifty parking spaces on the site and five hundred and ninety-five were required per the code. An initial study was completed for the project and determined that the project would have some potential for significant effect on the environment in the areas of, uh, water, air quality, biological, cultural, noise, transportation and tribal resources. However, with the project, we have included twenty mitigation measures implemented for the project with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And with those applied, there will be less, not a significant effect on the environment. And therefore a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared. Notification for the project was noticed within three hundred feet of resident, or to all sites within three hundred feet, as well as posted on the site and in the newspaper. To date, I've received one phone call regarding the project. The caller did not have any concerns with the project, more with the existing, uh, situation on the site with, um, and her, the fencing, what type of fencing would be put up. Um, and you've also received a, a letter on your, your chair today or this evening. With this staff, this complete staff's report, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the resolutions twenty eighteen oh one, twenty eighteen oh two, twenty eighteen oh three, twenty eighteen oh four, oh five and oh six, and recommend that the city council certify the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring program, approve the general plan amendment, approve the change of zone, approve the tentative parcel map and approve the master plot plan, two plot plans, a phasing plan, two conditional use permits. And, and with that, we'll answer any questions for you. The applicant is also here with their environmental consultant as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to add, Julie had mentioned that a, a letter was put on your dais, but didn't elaborate on much of the detail there. It's my understanding that we did get that, it came in today. It was a letter from a law firm alleging some possible inappropriateness maybe in the way the transfer of the land was made between the current owner and the previous owner. We made a hard copy available to you on your dais. Our city attorney has looked at the letter and is able to, to give you some insight or some, you know, uh, background on what we have found if it's of your interest tonight. So I just wanted to let you know that we have looked at it and.
Sure, thank you. Honorable Chair, Commission members, very simply put, it's, it's not an inside, but it's, it's, uh, the letter states that there's a pending litigation pertaining to the title of the property. The letter admits that the title of the property is in the name of the applicant. Whether or not there's a lawsuit, whether or not the title was obtained in accordance with an agreement or outside of an agreement, and there's a litigation over that issue is completely not within, within the purview of your review, approval or denial of the project. We have confirmed the applicant is the person that, uh, has control over the land. The letter affirms that at this point in time. So though I understand the energy in the letter, uh, that is completely outside of your purview with regard to approval or denial of the project.
Thank you. With that being said, would the applicant like, like to, uh, present some information?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, my name is Paul D. Palatas. I'm the planning director for M S A Consulting. And with me tonight is Nicole Van, she's our project manager for this, uh, this project as well as Richard Torn, who's the applicant. Our offices are located at, at thirty-four, two hundred Bob Hope Drive in Rancho Mirage. So we came out to see you today. And, um, just want to say just a few things, not to duplicate what staff has said, but just to summarize that, uh, this project is to complement the health district in the, in the Nason corridor as well as the regional hospital next door. It contains the three components of assisted living, skilled nursing, and then the medical offices next to Nason. Uh, we spent almost two years now working through the details of the design with staff. And, uh, we think we've brought you a quality project tonight. So we would like to request your approval and be available to answer any questions. As well, if there's any, uh, public comment, we'd like to have the opportunity to, to respond to that if possible afterwards. So we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions of the staff? All right. Before we move to the public comments, I had a couple of things that I wanted a little bit of clarification on. Give me a moment while I find them. The parcel map is not a requirement of any building permits. Is that correct? They can move forward with grading and building permits?
That's correct on, well, there's a small portion. There, there's two lots involved and the two lots, let me go back. So yes, and they could develop the, um, the easterly portion of the site and then work together with land development. If they were, wanted to put it all into one lot, then they could work with that, land development on either a, a parcel map or a, I, I would defer to land development on, on how they would put that smaller piece in, but.
Okay. I was just curious whether there was a, whether they were tied together, but.
The, the parcel map that they're showing for the seven lots is not really tied. I'm, I would ask the applicant, but that seems like a financing type, um, a map more so than for the project.
Thank you. There's a condition that requires that reciprocal access between the property and the adjacent parcel to the south provided to the city. That's for the shared driveway off of Nason?
Yes, yes.
The project requires a six-foot wall on the south and the west side?
South and east.
South and east, excuse me. Yeah, thank you. And I think that was it. No other questions of the commissioners? All right, well then let's, uh, open the public hearing. We have speakers?
Yes, sir, we do. We have four. We have Bill Novador, Rafael Brugeras, Bill Liu and Kendrick Rivas.
Mr. Novador.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. Just to give you an idea, I'm also a planning commissioner in the city in which I live. So I am very familiar with what you have to go through. The other part of it is that I have been working on this project since two thousand and eight. We also had engaged the services of M S A Consulting. So there is a bit of an issue and conflict. But one of the things that I would like to make you aware of is that there is a list pendants on this property. It has been on the property since two thousand and fourteen and twice it has been before the courts, and the courts have refused to remove the list pendants. We are in litigation and we will probably be going to trial towards the, um, last quarter of two thousand and eighteen. Issue is also that everything that has been listed as to our site, we also were the ones that did the lot line adjustment for that small parcel through M S A Consulting, by the way. The other part of it is that the buildings are almost identical to exactly what we developed. And so I am here really more as a friend to the commission and to the city of Moreno Valley. John Terrell, Mark Gross, I can go through the list of the individuals that have worked with us and understand what we were trying to do. I would appreciate it very much that your consideration would be, and I would like my attorney, Mr. Bill Liu, to now speak on our behalf as well.
Commissioners, uh, I assume, I assume you have my letter?
Yes.
Okay, and, and did you have a chance to look at it?
Yes.
There were two attachments, there's the lawsuit and a copy of the lawsuit and a copy of the list pendants. Well, basically what we have here is a case of theft. Uh, Mr. Torn and Mr. Novador about four or five years ago got into a venture where they were going to develop this land with this precise same medical facility. So what Mr. Torn has done is he's stolen all of the documents and, and we just found out about this very, very recently. So the lawsuit is theft. So they, they got into a project to develop this land and they were going to develop it together. But then Mr. Torn took, took it upon himself and queries Mr. Novador, where he, where he got the land under his own title under Galaxy Management. But he was supposed to transfer that back to the joint venture so they can go ahead and develop it. But he never did. Then he went ahead and he foreclosed on the property as a partner in the joint venture. And what you can't do is a breach of fiduciary duty. So we did file a lawsuit in two thousand and fourteen. The trial should be set, it's, it's, it's filed in Riverside, uh, court before Judge Otolia. It should be set for trial later this year. Mr. Torn went into court last year and went into court early this year to try to remove the list pendants.
This is a, this is a second speaker.
All right. Continue.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're both bills. So anyway, uh, Mr. Torn went into court to try to remove the list pendants. He failed. Uh, Judge Otolia said, and the test is whether we had a probability of success on the matter. And if we do have a probability, probability of success at trial, then the list pin is not removed. It has not been removed. And we anticipate when we go to trial that we will prevail. So I would ask the, this commission not to approve it. I would ask for a denial, but if you don't want to deny it, I think it would be incumbent upon you to at least hold it in abeyance until our trial. Because the, the title, I don't know, I, I don't understand what the city attorney is saying is not within your purview. This title is clouded. There has been a theft and fraud committed. And we're not asking for a long period of time for you to decide this matter. This, this case has been very, very old. We're going to go to a trial setting, uh, 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 hearing on March fifteen and the judge has already said that it's going to be set within, uh, six or seven months within that trial setting. So it should be set, uh, August or September. And we, we really believe we're going to prevail on this. So I think it's premature for this council or this commission to approve all this and go forward with all of this. And as Mr. Novador said, it's exactly what he has done for the last four or five years. Mr. Novador has put in over two million dollars into this project and having it stolen under his feet by Mr. Torn. So we're not asking for a lot from you, just perhaps an abeyance of this. Don't go forward. It's theft, we intend to win, and when we win, we'll proceed with this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Brugeras.
Chair Barnes, I was hoping that maybe you would have asked the attorney to answer that before we continue because if it's not going to be approved tonight, um, I mean, I would like to see it approved, it's a great project, but we have a double here as he's, he's claiming. So I love the project. I, I mean, I, I went out and looked at it and I loved the pictures. I love everything that they're going to do for, in the city of Moreno Valley. Even if it got approved tonight, it's not going to be built tomorrow. And if, for whatever reason, the truth comes out where we can't build it because, um, someone else prevailed, um, I, I'm not sure with what happens to our approval tonight if it is approved. So anyway, I'm going to use my last two minutes. So, anyway, I'm going to use my last two minutes to talk about the project. I do like the project. I like everything that's being done for the residents that need this care. What I wanted to know is urgent care is going to be, is it going to be 24 hours? Because it talks about urgent care building. I'm not sure if that's open to the public or not for 24 hours, urgent care. My second one is, I didn't see anything in the, in staff report where they're going to put some electric chargers for cars. And, you know, they have a lot of parking space, so I would like to see that be put into the, into the project. And I'm not sure if they're going to use any solar to charge the lights at night in the parking lot or anything like that, instead of using electricity. They can use that long strip that we see in the middle of 499 or 485, the picture, right down here. Maybe they'll put the lights, the solar, on top of those, like I see a lot of building, a lot of our parking structures where they have solar. So there's always constant light at night, you know, so, because I'm not sure if this facility is going to be open 24 hours. But I do like it, and I'm hoping that, you know, whatever happens tonight, we get an answer from our city attorney and our city managers and our staff managers, and wow, I'm surprised. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Last speaker, Mr. Rivas.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I'm actually making this project, the only thing that I like about this project is the office space. And I do believe that there's too many parking spaces. But I agree with Rafael, I think we do need to add, like, electric charging stations because they're going to be more common because apparently California wants us all to have electric chargers that year 2040. So it would be nicer, like, if we're going to start implementing that now. I think since there's probably some segregation, I think this project should be on hold until it gets out, it gets settled. I know one of the reasons why you guys might want to approve it because of property tax. And I just learned that in my government class yesterday. Now another reason why this bunch of buildings coming on and 60% vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Seeing no other public speakers, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You may want to allow the applicant to come back and rebut any of the speaking if you like.
Yeah, thank you. Would the applicant like to rebut any of the public comments? Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, just a few things. As far as the parcel map goes, it is mainly for financing. The parcels are designed around the building, so that will facilitate development of the property. And then I've also been on a planning commission before, and I think we all know that, you know, the planning commission's job is to basically act on the physical merits of the project before you. So we would request you do that. I'm sure Mr. Novador will have his day in court, and they can resolve whether he's correct or not at that time. Thank you.
My name is Richard Tong, and I have a few comments about this Bill Novador and the Bill Liu. And we have this silver matter in the courtroom. I think we should discuss in the courtroom. And tonight, we have the application for the entitlement of the project. I think the silver matter, sure, we can, we should put aside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, now close the public hearing. As you said, that's the direction that we've been given by the city attorney, so...
Honorable Chair, Commission members, again, my opinion remains the same. If court wanted to take control of the property and preclude any development or anything else happening with the property, there are mechanisms by which that could have been applied for and obtained if it was warranted.
Right.
Before you, as a project, approval of the project is what you're considering. Litigation over the title to the property, by the way, the litigation mostly asks for money, so not for the property, is beyond the purview of this commission. We're not sitting here deciding who's right or wrong on a lawsuit for title. If I may add, with regard to your action this evening, you're in advisory capacity on this project to the city council. The city council will be the ultimate decision-making authority on the project because the components of the project require legislative action, which is, which is you advising or recommending to the city council. We don't know how to have a city council date yet, but if we find any more information at that point, we could also share that with the city council. But at this point, I agree with what the city attorney has said. I'm recommending that you move forward.
I agree. That was my opinion. It's a civil matter, and that's not us.
I do have, I do have a question. So it's prior to the city attorney. So depending on whatever the outcome is, if this project is entitled, let's just go down that path. It gets a recommendation for entitlements to the council, and the council acts and it entitles the project, approves it. And then, and this goes to civil, civil trial, and it does have a change where the, if the prop, just a what-if scenario here. If the property did, the transaction was found to be faulty and it, it's clouded, what becomes of the entitlement? Does the entitlement just run with the land, or is it because if there was a change in ownership, what becomes of that?
And I'm not going to speak for the judge. If the judge decides that there are some orders that are pertinent to the fate of the property then itself, then those orders will be issued, and those affected need to comply with them. With regard to the approvals or the entitlements that are obtained, they run with the land. So if the land is sold or transfer of property is mandated by the court, that does not affect these entitlements in the form that they were submitted to you, in the form that they were approved, ultimately by the council.
Thank you. Any other questions?
As in questions?
Yeah, we can start talking about the project.
I was actually going to ask the very similar question that Mr. Sims asked, but we got an answer, so... As far as the noise goes, there's a noise study, and it says that there's no, there's no, there's no noise issue. However, I'm seeing the fact that we have an assisted living facility, we have skilled nursing facilities and an urgent care. I'm assuming at some point in time, an ambulance might come to or from the facility. I live off of Nason, and when you have your windows open, all you hear all night is sirens. Is there any kind of mechanism we can do to quiet some of the sirens or put a limit on what they can and can't do? I know it's an emergency situation, so the sirens are necessary, but that's all you hear all night, so you have to sleep with your windows and doors shut.
I could respond to that just based on experience we've had with projects near fire stations. But generally, and Fire might speak to this as well, but my understanding is that usually emergency vehicles will, will turn their sirens off when they go onto private property in a situation where it's, especially in a residential area. Obviously, depends on the circumstance, and it would be very difficult to condition a project for that. But, but that is my understanding with, with kind of the way it works with the fire services.
But this facility won't be receiving emergency calls, but it'll be generating them as needed, like if my own personal residence needed an emergency call. There's not going to be a designation for ambulances.
That is correct.
Else? No further questions? Well, then. Anyone like to make a motion? As did I. Yeah. Compliments to the staff. The perfect project. Well done. I'll, I'll ask a question. Well, the rest of you decide whether you have. Could I get a brief explanation of the medical overlay? And, because I see it's, will be applied to this project or this property as part of the entitlement. How does that work? Explain it a little bit.
I'll make a try at that, since I wrote that section of the code about 10 years ago, but it was a long time ago. But as I recall, the purpose of the medical overlay is to, in fact, encourage medical uses within a given area. There are some, I guess the key element of it is that it allows for some variation in the use table, in our regular use table, as far as medical uses. So it allows for a little broader range of medical uses that would be otherwise maybe allowed under the zone of commercial or office. So, you know, it doesn't, it's not very far-reaching in terms of what it allows that differs from the code. It's more of a refinement of the use table in that regard. It also identifies some uses as conditional use permits. So it pretty well protects neighboring residential in terms of the uses that are allowed within the overlay. But it's really to facilitate economic development associated with furthering medical use.
Is the application of that a component of the change of zone?
That, that would be. It is, it is an actual layer on our zoning map.
If I may, just a little elaboration. A project that recently came before the planning commission was the Main Street Transitional Care Facility. It was the 90-bed semi-hospital type of a, of a project. That was allowed because of the medical overlay that applied to that property, which is up just northeast of the Kaiser property. And so we're asking for exactly what Chris said there. It's for an economic development purpose. Our economic development goals, we're talking about the areas along Nason being encouraged for additional medical-related uses, and so this is in line with that.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Any questions? Everyone's...
Honorable Chair and Commission members, just anticipating the next move, one motion to approve staff's recommendation would be appropriate under these circumstances.
That sounds good to me.
And it can also be just a motion to approve the resolution, correct? You don't have to read all of the items under there. That'd be a lot of reading.
Except that there are multiple resolution numbers, so you'll want to, okay.
Yeah. So, do we have a mover?
I have it, sir. I have it, sir.
Got it?
You'll do a push button as soon as I hear who makes the motion.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Korzak.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 2018-01, 02, 03, 04, 05, and 06.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? Please vote. All votes have been cast. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Have a wrap-up?
This item is, as I indicated earlier, going to be going forward to the city council. Since your action was to recommend approval, there is no appeal necessary. The motion will move forward to the city council. I will let you know when that is.
Thank you, Rick. Any other commission business that we need to attend to? Rick, Commissioners?
I had a question, just for staff, just a general comment. On this last project, I drive by the project site pretty much daily, and the public notice sign, although when you're standing next to it is gigantic, when you're driving down Nason, you can barely read public notice, public hearing notice. Is there any chance of making those signs a little bit larger, or some of the text on it bigger, so you can see it?
I will say that the signs that we are posting out there are fairly large. They do meet the obligation that our code calls for. Our fee schedule is tied to the cost of those signs. And so if we were to try and increase the sign, size of the sign, it could affect the cost, and that cost may not be fully covered by the applicants. And right now, the way the fee structure is set, it's intended to cover that. So that would be only the one...
Maybe just jockey the public hearing notice words around or give it like a date.
We can take a look at that and bring it to the sign.
You're driving down the street at 50 miles an hour, and you're like, I can't even read that.
We could talk to the sign manufacturer if they can increase the size of the font, at least for the public notice portion. That's probably a simple modification.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anything else? Any staff comments?
Nope, other than I introduced our new planning manager earlier. You'll expect to see him. One particular item that will be coming before the commission soon will be the cannabis regulations. We expect that to be on your agenda for February 22nd. A notice was put to the newspaper and will be published this weekend. We are still fine-tuning all the recommendations on that, and so we think that'll be a, I'll call it an interesting discussion, possibly that evening. So I just want to give you, give you the heads up. With regard to filling the vacancies on the commission, I think there was a question asked about that before. There is no progress at this point, so in case anybody up there was interested to know. I'll keep you posted if I hear anything else, but right now, I'm not hearing anything. And then the only other thing would be the first meeting in April will be the time to select a new chair and vice chair. So in case you guys are interested to know that, that's coming up in two months, so...
I'm sure they're all interested to know about that part.
I would just like to make a comment about the, the, the lack of commissioners on our commission. The, I believe we had our first lack of quorum. I know that for, we had a meeting miss or council due to lack of quorum. It was in big, bold print when it came across my email. I was one of the offenders, so I apologize in advance. But we went through, three or four years ago, quite the rigmarole about having alternates. And maybe it wasn't even that long, because it still seems to create a bit of a spasm in my back over that. But I, I, I would strongly urge the council to make some decisions because we've gone without, we've had vacancies for quite some time. I, you know, I don't know how long it is, but it's probably been a year. And it seems like that's not that hard of a deal to get done. And, or at a minimum, appoint the two alternates that we had, so we wouldn't have a lack of quorum. Because I think that was the whole goal for that. But anyhow, that would be my suggestion. I could write a letter to the council members and give that if, well, they don't watch these meetings.
Jeff, you and I are like-minded. I was going to say something very similar, and I completely agree. The lack of direction from the top down is very frustrating, especially when we don't have enough people here to make quorum. We have a body of seven, and the quorum's four, and when one or two of us are sick or have to miss. The last meeting got canceled. The applicant had to waste money and kick, it's, it's a big problem, and the city council needs to get off the dime and do something.
Can we, as a body, draft a...
Strongly worded letter?
Letter to the council that would be presented to them and maybe read into the record or something?
I, I think that the comments here, and which will be reflected in a minute, can be relayed to the city council. To answer your question, if you would like, anybody can write a letter to the city council, so that would be your prerogative.
And if it's presented to them, will it be read into the public record, or will it just be circular filed?
You write the letter, I'll read it. I will go to a meeting and read it.
Well, I guess my feeling about our comments getting to the city council, yeah, that might happen. But at this point, it's been so long, and I think we've done such a disservice to the people wanting to do business in the city that I'd like something a little more formal, expressing our disappointment in the action.
I tend to agree. I really wasn't that worried about it, and I ingest, you know, the pain of the struggle we went through, the alternate, alternate rules for the alternate commissioners, AR, whatever it is. But, you know, it really didn't hit home until we got the cancellation notice, and I looked at the cancellation notice, it says, "Due to lack of quorum." And that just seems dumb, that we can't have a quorum when there's seven seats and two alternates. It'd be highly unusual that we would have that if we had all the, all the positions filled.
In my tenure on the commission, that was the first meeting due to lack of quorum. That was canceled.
So if we wanted to draft up something... So if we wanted to draft up something, we obviously don't want to take meeting time to do that, how would we go about getting together in some fashion to do that?
Well, I would advise against you, three or more of you getting together, actually four or more of you getting together outside of this meeting, since you're talking about it this evening, and if you agree for the chairman to write the letter, and you agree on how you'd like to have that presented, you can do that, you can do that here, but I would discourage you from trying to do that outside of this meeting. I think that, just to follow up, honorable chair and commission members, if the planning commission is contemplating as a body, assigning a writer to a letter that is going to go to the council, my recommendation would be that you agendize that for the next meeting. That's a decision that's not on the agenda or consideration or deliberation, that is not on the current agenda, and if it's going to come from the body, from the planning commission, it needs to be agendized, and that decision needs to be voted on.
All right, then I'd like to ask that we agendize that item, and I think the item might be a committee of three. We can do that, right?
Committee of three would be a brown-eyed body. Their quorum's four?
Quorum's four.
Okay, then committee of three would be fine, as an ad hoc committee.
All right, so next week, or next meeting, let's put on the agenda a line item to put together a committee, Mr. Lowell and Mr. Sims, to put something together and make a statement voicing our thoughts on the issue.
Okay, just so I understand clearly, I think what I'm hearing you say is that there's going to be a committee of three of you that are going to get together, prepare a draft letter, that draft letter will be put...
That decision is going to be made, whether or not to have a committee.
Whether or not to have a committee, okay, okay.
Yeah, what I'm proposing is that we discuss at the next meeting, the idea of putting together a three-person panel.
We'll put that on the agenda.
Three of them doing something, and then whatever they do, we bring that before the commission, everybody would vote on it, and if it's in favor, then it would move forward.
Okay, we'll put that on there.
Reasonable?
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
For moving that forward.
If you're an executive for a company, and your board of directors have given you money to fill positions, how long would you be the chief executive if you didn't fill all the positions?
Cost-saving.
Ah, good gosh.
Yeah. Ninety-eight bucks a month times two, buddy. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, I think we've used up our planning commission comments. So with that being done, let's adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission, February, February, February 22, 2018, 7:00 PM, in these chambers. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Good night.